Okay, good afternoon, everyone. Thank you all for being here. I'm not the Chair Kevin Roden, as you can see. Kevin is running a little late. He's on his way. He's stuck in traffic, so I'll get us started. Okay, he's part of traffic. And I don't know where he's coming from, but he did send me a picture of traffic and it didn't look good. But we will get started for the public. I'm Jennifer Gamble, Councilmember Jennifer Gamble, Vice Chair of Budget, and we have a good house here. We didn't, we don't go through all of that, do we? And we will start with the presentation by Director Kelly Flannery, Finance Director, about fund balances, and then we'll hear from Diana Alacron with NDOT. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry, my phone is ringing. So spoiler alert, I already presented this once before and I didn't create anything new. So for those that haven't seen it, maybe it's new for those that haven't. This is just the slides towards the end of the budget presentation I gave on May 1st when we filed the budget ordinance. In December, you'll remember, after a couple specially called meetings and three readings of Budget and Finance Committee, council unanimously approved the modernized funds balances policy. They had defined, those policies define the allowable uses of operating and debt service fund balances and replenishment requirements if we do make the choice to utilize it. And so that's what is reflected here. I think it's important to note that while we are doing this exercise as part of the budget ordinance, these numbers are not part of the budget. So historically, we've always provided a fund balance estimate in the budget ordinance. With our new policy, if there are surpluses, it says in part of the budget process, we will appropriate it in this process. But these numbers, not available for operating, they are not operating. How these numbers are assessed and determined is 2022 actual fund balances plus 23 projected year-end fund balance. So for revenues beyond expenses, that's how we get to these numbers. So none of these dollars are reflected in the 24 budget, so it's all outside of that. So what the operating fund balances says will have two months or 17%. So if you'll see GSD, USD, schools, total 602 million expected. Policy requires 476. That is the one number that does come from the budget. So it's that 476, 756, 700 is 17% of the 2024 recommended budget amount. And so 602 minus 476 leaves us with 125.7 available surplus in the operating funds. On the debt service side of the House, the policy says that we will keep 50% of the annual debt service required appropriation in reserves. That number is 219 million across funds. We have 206, leaving 12 million. And the recommendation in the budget ordinance is to just let it live there and continue to grow because next year there will likely be another geo bond issuance. So your requirement will be higher. So this will start building on that balance. And so within the 2024 budget ordinance is the recommended allocation for those uses. And with that, if anyone has any questions on how we got here, I guess I could take them now or if we want to move on to proposed projects, I guess, Chair, whatever is your pleasure.
We can take questions. Are there any questions? Benedict and Mendez?
Thank you, Vice Chair. Could you go back one slide, please? On the debt service fund balance on the 12 and a half million, I completely understand the desire to keep that there for future geo bond debt, art geo bond issuance. My question is, could that be used as far as, you know, on the operating side, commercial paper, for instance, can that be used instead of something like that? Or can you help me with how that might be used maybe to retire debt early right now rather than saving it for future?
Sure. And so the, on the debt service side of the fund balance policy, the only allowable use is debt prepayment or leaving it there and building reserves. So those are your only two choices. It could never make its way to capital expenditures unless you wanted to change the policy. Right now, we just did, time has no meaning anymore. I guess it was July of last year, we accelerated the geo bond transaction. So we actually paid off a portion of all the commercial paper that was outstanding, but we also front funded all of the GOs. We weren't drawing on our CP line. So we actually just did our first CP line draw today's Thursday, maybe Monday, recently. Monday was a holiday. Okay, maybe Tuesday. So we don't really have anything outstanding on CP meaningfully. And a $12 million cut on it really, you only are paying interest anyways. So it's not, it's not worth, the juice isn't worth the squeeze on that one. And we could cherry pick, there's probably some bonds that have savings that we could defuse. But I think it's more advantageous to start building up the reserve because 50% of an annual appropriation, if you're going to borrow 500 or 600 million dollars next year, that's a $40 million debt service requirement. And if you're doing half of that, that's another 20 million you're going to need on top of the actual 40 in the reserve, so.
And 20 million is roughly 10 cents worth of property tax. I mean, that's a tough number to get to, right? But if a penny of property tax is around 3 or 4 million dollars, then 20 million nickel of property tax. I know you don't want to say a number on that, but thereabouts. Well, I don't know that you don't want to say a number.
I don't know what the, what was the question?
So I'm getting in the weeds on this, but so if we, too many ifs in that particular scenario. I guess what I was trying to illustrate was if we're going to issue as much as 500 million in additional bonds, 500 million dollars, well, the payments on it, you were saying, that would then need to be a part of the operating budget in order for us to make those payments. I was trying to equate that to how much in property tax, how many pennies in property tax that would be. Therefore, helping people understand what impact that has to their household.
I think your math was back of the envelope, right?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Mendez?
Is it, is it on? Yeah, okay. So I just got the answer from Margaret Darby that you sent yesterday about the 187 million dollar number and justifying it. So I really, and I guess just for people who are watching, and in page 17 of the presentation, it talks about there being 187 million dollars worth of new revenue. And in looking year over year at the two budgets, last year's and this year's, I couldn't, I couldn't figure out, well.
Am I on the right slide?
No. The one that looks like this, that says 17 on it, there you go. It says 18 on that one. 17 on the one I printed out. Regardless, that's the page. That 187 million dollar number, I was trying to figure out where that came from comparing last year's budget to this year's budget, couldn't do it. And I know you gave a spreadsheet back to Margaret Darby yesterday, but I just got that literally a couple minutes ago.
Every part of me thought I printed it out and put it in my book, but I'm sitting on the printer upstairs.
Well, I think I understand the methodology, but just if somebody wanted to figure out how to connect the 187 million to last year's budget, can you just conceptually talk about what they have to do to figure that out?
Sure. So I feel like I got some. I had expected you to ask me this question when I presented it on the first, so I scribbled notes there. So I think I might be able to do this without actually having numbers in front of me. But in June of 2023, this council approved a 2.95, I'm going to do back of the envelope math like you, billion-dollar budget. That included some one-time fund balance uses. I think it was about 9 million. I'm going to ask the budget team to just throw something at me if I go really wild and I have the numbers wrong, but I feel like I'm doing good so far.
I've got the spreadsheet in front of me, too.
And then in February, I brought a mid-year check-in to this group because it was really clear that revenues were far exceeding expectations. And we were doing good in the fund balance. We had a real policy. So why hoard cash? Let's get it out the door. And we made the decision, this council approved, to spend 86 million dollars in one-time capital costs. So dollars that would have otherwise been bond funded, we issued cash, or we did a supplemental for 86 million. We will cash fund those projects. It was a lot of, 22 million to fleet. ITS got 14 or 15, parks got 13, public safety. I'm never really giving you any, Diana. I'm sorry.
I'm so disappointed still.
Yeah. So by doing that, we were able to save about 37 million over the life of, if we had issued those bonds. So it was a pretty good call. So take your 2.95, add 87 to it, and that gets you just under 3-ish?
3 million, 3 billion, 30 million.
And so that is, what is the delta between the 3, 2, 1, 8 and the 303, 4? I guess it would be, it was, if we add the supplement, 86 supplemental plus the 295.
All right, thank you. I appreciate that.
I would be amazed if anyone followed that because I confused myself a little bit.
Any other questions related to the fund balance? Councilmember Cash?
Thanks. If we could go back to the last page that was.
This one?
That one, yeah. So this is part, this, correct me if I'm wrong here, this is part of the budget ordinance?
It is included in the budget ordinance, but it is surplus fund balance. So it is non-recurring revenue. It is not in the budget.
Not the 24 budget, but it's?
No operating costs. It is just surplus.
We have to pass something to allocate that, those funds the way they are, they are there or amend it?
Your fund balance policy allows you to allocate the surplus. It doesn't mandate you. You could leave it all there and it could stay in reserves and.
And this is what the mayor's office included in there?
This was the recommendation. And I should add that these dollars, well, I'm very confident in them, will not become available till the 2023 book is closed and the CAFER is released. So that would be probably like December timeline. But because so many of these projects are being advanced, it felt like it was worthy to get people kind of starting on the planning of them.
Gotcha. And so this is amendable?
100%.
Yeah. And, but I guess I want to know that, understand the difference between the GSD, the left side and the right side, the MNPS allocations could be amended but have to go to MNPS. Is that correct?
Exactly. And I think you heard Dr. Battle say during her remarks, while their board makes their own decisions on how dollars are spent, they would be supportive and have always been kind of supportive of council's desires, so.
So we would pass that and they would pass it as well, or which?
I couldn't, I don't think she was willing to commit to the votes of every one of her board members, but she was confident that they would be supportive.
They will have, they would have to vote on how to spend the 65 million?
Yeah, we would, we make recommendations. We would send them the recommendations, but they could change them if they chose to.
And we would allocate that 65.8 million, but we would not allocate all the different expenditures or?
I think we would, we would itemize it and hope that they would do the same.
Gotcha.
I mean, this is the first time we're doing this, probably the last time with this magnitude of these numbers. So we're kind of, you know, building the plane as we're flying it, but.
Gotcha. And so, and one more question. When we talk about one-time capital expenditures, that means stuff, right? A, like, like I get that as it is now, raises for employees don't qualify. But would one-time, I'm assuming one-time, like bonuses would not as well because it's not capital?
What the policy that you passed that just says capital? And I guess, again, when you're in it, you realize that you could have done better and maybe we should have defined capital. So I looked back to any other policies where we've defined capital. And the CIB that, you know, has been filed, does define capital as, I wrote that down somewhere too, but I can send you the link to it. But public facility, long, I think it said like equipment, heavy equipment with a long duration of life. It's very, it's not super specific, but it's, it's capital. It's what you expect capital to be.
Is there a definition for long?
Not really. When we think, when we do it historically, what are we going to put on 4% versus what are we going to put on bond funding? We try to have a 10-year life to it, which is, so it's fire trucks. You heard Chief Swan. I will advocate for him because I don't know how many people were here. His request was if we're going to amend this, he'd like another 2 million for a mobile command center. That's something that would, you know, a lot of life to that, that lives forever.
Gotcha. Computers would?
Not so much.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Councilmember Mendez?
Just to follow up on Councilmember Cash's question. For the MNPS side, the policy puts it in our hands whether we want to appropriate the surplus to MNPS or just leave it in fund balance. But once we decide to appropriate it, we can make the recommendation, but they can do what they want. So not that anybody would argue for it, but we theoretically could say, oh, you know what? We're going to appropriate 35 million of that 65 to MNPS and just let the other 30 million ride in fund balance.
So they have recommended 11.75 as additional reserve. And what we were talking about, does that really mean, are we actually going to write in there 11.75 additional reserve? Or are we just going to really take 65, 66 minus 11? Like, what does that actually look like? But I think they had some really specific thoughts around their employee benefit trust fund being the recipient. So that's why we ended up on that space. But yeah, you could absolutely take it somewhere else. I think the other thing that we did, when we did do the one-time bonuses program for schools last year, that kind of, to the best of our ability is Metro binding them. It said something like they had to provide the finance director a plan. And so maybe you could entertain a concept like that, like here's the proposed uses provided finance director approves. I don't know.
Well, the main thing I'm trying to get at is we're not mechanically obligated by the policy to send 65 million to them just because there's 65 million of surplus. We could decide whatever number we wanted out of that. Thanks.
Councilmember Allen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just, I'm looking at the GSD, USD allocations and this may, maybe this is a question for later in the discussion. You let me know if that's. But the biggest item there is the 15 million dollars for BRT planning. And I guess, I know often that land acquisition and planning are included in the capital process. 15 million seems like a really large number simply for planning. So is there, will there be an opportunity to get more detail on what, what that planning would entail?
Sure. You know, if we could rewind the tape, I would have invited all the department directors who are on this list to be in attendance.
And I can, I can write them on that.
Yeah, there was discussion with Steve Bland and there was rationale to it. I just don't have it in front of me, but we can absolutely get you something written down. And for all of these, the only one I can speak with like greater specificity because they provided an itemized at their hearing was Nashville General that that magic number is just their full request completely, and that's all itemized. The large vehicle fleet, police and fire trucks. Capital grants for cultural support is really for art institutions, but any way that art sees fit. And then Diana is here to speak to the other large three buckets.
Okay. So if we can just get that on the council question and answer page, that'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Mendez?
Sorry to do it again. So following up on Councilmember Allen's point, a thing for whoever's going to be here next year. You know, this is essentially a capital spending plan, but instead of bonding it out, it's spending it all at once. And we've got a bunch of rules about, that would answer your questions if this were a capital spending plan, about the documentation, about what the project is, how does it connect to a CIB number? How, like, what's previous spending been? And to the extent that this is essentially a CSP, somebody ought to make a rule that if we're going to have this brand-new process to do, I don't mean this pejoratively because like, it's great to buy things all upfront rather than bonding it out. But your questions, if it were a CSP, would be fully answered. And somebody ought to make a rule that if we're going to spend money this way, you got to do the same documentation you would do for a CSP.
Good point. Councilmember Benedict?
Thank you, Vice Chair. I guess, and just kind of following up on that. With MNPS, is there, can we get a breakdown of what these requests are? Are these coming from the mayor's office or from MNPS? Can we understand what, you know, where will the pre-K classroom additions be? Right? Are they going to be all in District 7? Probably not. Are there going to be none in District 7? I sure hope not. Right? So is that something we can get follow-up on?
Yeah, I think, I think that's a really fair ask and we could get that for all. I don't know if it would be the exact same template for CSP, but we could do something similar. But it's the first, the substitutes not due for a couple weeks, yeah.
Yes.
Look at me binding people. Yeah, we could do that.
Council office says that we can get that, we can get that information. I'm not sure how fast, hopefully really fast.
I think we have most of it. That's just how we got there.
Do we know if any of these are on the CIB? I know that Alex Green Elementary is in the CIB. I don't know. They have to be. They should all be, okay.
Yeah, I think like the capital grants, that's not anything we've ever funded before. So that's new, but you know, large vehicle fleet, I think is on there. Yeah, all of your stuff's on there.
Yep, all of mine are on a CIB.
Okay. So we'll work on that, getting the list of what's entailed in those MNPS allocations particularly. And then Diana is here if anyone has any questions about the NDOT, GSD, USD allocations. Okay. No further questions and our chair is here. Yay! We'll move on to, go ahead.
I do have a question in terms of the Barnes Fund. While I know we've got to prioritize affordable housing, but we're already behind with the funding that the Barnes Fund has already been allocated. So what efforts are being made in order to get the affordable housing built, to be done before we, you know, and can we put that money towards another project in order to ensure that we are getting more housing built sooner rather than later?
Oh, whoever can answer?
I apologize, I apologize.
I'm not, I wouldn't claim to be able to answer, but I will just throw out one piece of information. This budget includes another position for someone to clear titles. And I know that's one of the things that's caused a time lag in the Barnes Fund is that the different nonprofits have had to spend sometimes up to a year clearing titles. So that is, to answer that question, that is one thing that this budget addresses just in terms of the time lag on that.
Do you have any idea what the timelines are, how that's going to help with speeding up the process?
Well, no, I can't speak to that. I think that's probably an Ashley Brown successor question. But we could put that on the, on the, but I know it's taken up to a year at times to clear those titles. And having a person who that's what they do, I think, rather than the nonprofits having to learn how to do it over and over again, is intended to be, to address part of that, that question.
I'm just speaking on the urgency of it, you know, that's the number one question.
Sharing, if you want to, next week, whatever day, or not next week, but the following week, we have a couple more sessions. If you want someone to get me, get somebody here from the Barnes Fund to answer some questions, more than happy to get them in here, so.
Well, I've actually met with them and talked to them and Councilmember Allen was there. So they know. I'm just wondering what we need to do in order to speed up the process. And I know this is going to help, but this is very urgent for us to address.
I wasn't, I don't know who she had on her list, so I had Emily, Zofa, and then Bob. I don't know what order they came in, so the first hand I saw was Emily. So Councilmember Benedict, I'm sorry, if you'd like to.
It's all right. Thank you, Kevin. Thank you, Chair. Are we ready to point, so, and Director Alacron? You met, no, I don't, okay. So I don't want to jump into details on the Vision Zero, for instance, yet. We're not there yet. Is that what?
That's fine. So I didn't, I didn't know where we were, so.
You brought up a really good point. So maybe if we could commit to getting like kind of the CSP one-page or summaries for all these, I don't know, by next Friday, that we could.
Right.
I'm not saying not do this right now, but go through, have all the department directors do it on the 12th or the 13th?
Right. I asked them to just to bring, we got the list today. And so I just wanted to bring it and make sure I could share it with people that showed up so they could see what they were recommending. That way, when we get into our, you know, big sessions, we can actually have conversations on. The NDOT.
I'm talking about all the other ones.
All the other, you're talking about all the other ones, okay.
Before you go here, Councilmember Mendez suggested we should have kind of the CSP format, which I think is a really great idea, but I don't think we'll have them in advance of next week's work session.
That's fine.
So I'm just saying if we could do it the following weeks, that'd be helpful.
Yeah, because we had discussed that before. We can put it in, we're going to have to have it in a big list as Bob was talking about. So, so I appreciate that. So y'all, I'm sorry, I jumped in the middle of all this. So I don't know where we are, so.
If I can just clarify that, we can get to my Vision Zero question after, I guess we're still kind of on some broader finance questions?
If we're on broader.
It looks like Councilmember Mendez has a broader question, but if I could come back to Vision Zero as soon as we're ready?
No, it's fine.
Thank you.
Councilmember Mendez, you're recognized.
Just, I really appreciate putting together the CSP-like info. And Hannah and I were having a side conversation that it would be great if, and you guys don't have to answer it now, but I would like it if we can, my understanding, I assumed they were all CSP-like because I think the charter says any capital expenditure has to be in the CIB. And so I did moderately wonder whether 6.7 million dollars for Barnes Fund was in the CIB. And ditto with the arts organizations, because if, if we're calling it capital, I think it has to be in the CIB per charter. If it's not capital expense, then is it really, like, I'm fuzzy on why it's in that list. And so if we are going down the road of putting together CSP-like information, I do think it's important to have the CIB project number so we can identify if there are any that aren't. Like, I'm not necessarily opposed to that, but somebody needs to say, yes, that is capital and gee, it's okay that it's not in the CIB.
And for me, that would be, because no one has made that, has clarified, like Bob just said, I'd like legal to tell me if we can't use this or if it has to be in the CIB. I'd really like to know so we can head down that list instead of just, you know what I mean? Just going to everybody and asking what they'd like. So, thanks. Did you have anything else? Did you get, did you get all your answers quick? Thank you. I'm sorry, y'all. Y'all, I just sat in the traffic for an hour, so I'm warm to any transit recommendations right now.
You were transit.
I was transit, exactly. I was transit just now, but not, not good transit. So.
Why we need the BRT?
Well, they said, did you have a broad, I'm sorry, don't look at, don't look at me like that. So, you're recognized. I'm sorry. You're welcome.
And I think that after all of that, I don't even know what I want anymore. But, but, but I did want to say that where it goes to the Barnes Fund, was the reason why I raised my hand in the first place is that whatever we're doing, we should not go to where we take the money from Barnes Fund for anything. Because even with the recommendation, we're not even where we're supposed to be in. So that 30 million is what is supposed to keep getting us closer. And anything that takes less from that is just going to keep putting us back in housing should be the first thing. On the policy, the way that I read it is that it has to be like a one-time spending. Now, I know that capital spending is usually what is fixed at one time is not variable, but I don't look at it as it has to be in the CIB. I look at it as, as long as it's a spending that is not going to be continuous or required every year, that we should be fine. So I will keep that definition, which is what we have in the, in the fund balance policy. Ms. Kelly? So that we will be able to have that Barnes Fund in there. And so that's what we agreed on, that when we're coming up with this definition or we're coming up with the spending, we look at things that are not continuous, that is just one-time spending. So I don't think we were thinking about CIB.
It's definitely lowercase c in the fund balance policy. It just says lowercase c capital. Like I said, if we could do it over again, we definitely would have been more definitional about what that meant. But I think to your point, it meant, it just meant not operating.
Not operating. That's the way that I read it. And I think that I just don't want us to bottleneck ourselves into saying that everything has to be in the CIB for us to be able to do it. I think it would knock out some of the things that we want to do at one time that may not be in the, in the CIB. And so if we have that general understanding, then we can, we can proceed. And lastly, my understanding and to reiterate is that these are not set in stones. We can make recommendation for or against any of this list and put something else that we want. Uh, we can make recommendation for or against any of this list and put something else that we want.
Okay.
As long as it meets that definition. All right. Thank you.
Vice Chair was telling me that Diana's not made her presentation yet. So I didn't, does anybody have any questions on the broader presentation from, uh, Director Flannery? And if not, then we can kind of, I'll let, uh, Councilmember Hurd, you're recognized. Let you.
It, it's just that, you know, uh, public-private partnerships would push the effort of being able to get more affordable housing done quickly. And I know that when there have been some funds for housing and there's been a lion's share going to some organizations and they've not been able to fulfill it without the assistance from some of those who are not quite as busy. So I'm just wondering if we could equitably split the money in some way for us to speed up the process to get more housing done. Not necessarily take it away from the Barnes Fund, but make sure that we are spending the money in the best way we need to in order to get the results that we are looking for.
Thank you, Councilmember. Um, so the list that y'all have in front of y'all is the list that the mayor's office put out with their budget as far as where the excess fund balances, where they would, were wanting for them to go. And so, um, Director Alacron, she, she was the one that put this list together for us and I thought it'd be best if she just kind of went over kind of how she got her list and where it came from. So that way, when we move forward, whether projects have to be in the C I B or not, we'll know where she got her projects from. And that will help us kind of say, you know, kind of look at whether, uh, district council members think it's appropriate for this money to go to their district for that project or not. And so that's why I asked her to, she wanted to come and kind of talk about what she was looking at with Vision Zero and so that's why she is here. So, Director Alacron, if you want to kind of just give a quick run over through that and I would appreciate it. Thank you so much.
No problem. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. So, uh, we, uh, actually currently have, um, twelve million dollars allocated. Uh, Vision Zero is in our capital spending plan. We had requested, uh, twenty-five million in the CSP for the last round and we were only actually awarded eleven million. So that has literally cut all our projects down. So when the opportunity came up for the surplus, we, uh, actually asked for the difference. So we'd be able to move a lot of the projects that are in the Vision Zero, which is focused on the high injury network, which is mainly a lot of the pikes. We actually yesterday did a pilot study out on Dickerson in partnership with T dot. Um, yesterday was mainly with cones and to do counts and, um, also to record how behavior change happened with the new design. And then in two weeks, we'll be going out, taking that information and that analysis and actually doing a more temporary-permanent, I want to say, design. So in other words, we'll actually be putting stuff down more than, um, cone, uh, cones. We'll be putting paint on the ground. We'll be putting delineators, some rubber stoppers and that kind of stuff that is going to start changing behavior, provide for pedestrian refuge for crossing. And so that is really a great example of where we're going to show it works to get T dot's buy-in. That's going to allow us to move a lot of these projects even for, forward more aggressively. We were, uh, able to do that project through a grant that we received from Smart Growth. So we did that in partnership. And they were really good about bringing through, it was not just, um, Nashville, Memphis had it as well as Chattanooga and Knoxville. And it brought in their region, T O D, uh, T dot, um, regions as well as ours to have that conversation and kind of act as that liaison. So we could start moving a lot of these Vision Zero issues since most of the high injury networks do fall on T dot's internal, um, roadway network. So, um, so far it's a good success. I'm knocking on wood that it continues. Um, so we actually have kind of broken out some of the, uh, projects. And again, uh, where we got this list is coming from out of our, uh, Vision Zero, uh, action, um, plan, implementation plan. Um, and these would be the next group of projects that we would actually be working on to make improvements. And this again is based on where the crashes of, using data, where the crashes have occurred, where we have had seriously injuries or fatalities happen and we're able to actually, uh, move them forward. So as you can see, we've identified at, uh, White Bridge Pike, um, the Corbett Lane. We would look at putting in an enhanced pedestrian crossing. This is actually what I like to, this is tied in with the WeGo station, um, or bus stop, I should say, excuse me, so that we can make sure when they get off, they're passing quickly. And so we have broken it down and these are projects that we were originally asking for in the CSP, but we were not awarded the dollars, so they were taken out. So this has given us the opportunity to put them back in. And as you can see, a lot of them are tied to walkability and also to our transit operations, which we know are some of the areas that we really need to focus in. Um, enter, so I'm going to skip down to one more page because this is actually in two pages. And then this is some additional ones up there on Harding Place, Dickerson Pike again. We had some real good success so far and we're looking forward to getting that done. And then the last one is, is, uh, basically we want to take six hundred thousand and go through and work, um, on some of the high volume roadways and do school, um, zone markings. Right now, none of our schools have any marking on the ground to identify where a school zone starts and a school zone ends. And really, if we want to think about the safety of our children, uh, this falls into our Safe Routes to School deployment. We want to make sure we can go down and put down the beginning, um, and end. Right now we have signage up, but no one ever sees the signs. I even miss the signs. So by actually putting the marking on the ground, we want to be able to do that. So we made sure we included that in this opportunity so we can go and get that done. So that takes care of Vision Zero. So I can take questions on Vision Zero, go through all of it and then come back and answer anything? How would you like me to do that, Mr. Chair? Go through it all? Okay.
I can ask questions, so.
Okay. So we also, uh, have, uh, been allocated seven, um, point five million for sidewalk, um, surplus, um, spending. This is a list of, uh, the next projects that are on our, um, sidewalks, um, um, program that we need to get built out. Some of them are also actually in FYI twenty-three that we have not been able to get done because of the funding and some of the cost has gone up in the sidewalk. The cost for stormwater improvements has been a little bit more expensive, but, um, we, uh, felt like these again are really important. They're also tied under our Vision Zero initiatives of where we are having crashes or, or have had serious injuries and fatalities. So we're just continuing to move it forward and as part of, it's been prioritized through a walk-by plan. This is also in our CSP. Uh, we got, uh, funding for it and will gladly take on seven point five million more. By the end of this month, we would have spent close to forty million dollars in sidewalk repairs throughout the Davison County this year. Um, so we're super proud of that, but there is so much more we need to do. So we really felt this would be a great way to have those surplus dollars spent. And then the last category we received was in traffic calming. So we did receive four million dollars in our, the CSP for traffic calming, but we know that this is an extremely popular program. So we said, hey, we would like to do more, um, than what we already have in the program. And so we asked for another four million. That's going to allow us to add approximately, or allow us to add sixty additional projects that we will be able to do. Now, where we get, got this project list, if you remember, we just did a reallocation. We just did, we posted some list, we posted out there. People sent out their application. We went through our prioritization and we got a new list. We picked twenty-seven from the new list to move forward and that's what we're currently working on now. This is the next set of those. So we didn't go and pick and choose. We went down the list. We made sure every district got covered and we picked from that list. So it is the next set of priority streets that are in the traffic calming plan to date. So we, it wasn't a pick and choose. It was actually what is currently already prioritized in, through, through the prioritization system that we did through the last round of applications. So that's where this list came from. So we wanted to stay as fair and equitable as possible based on how we've always done it in the past. And that's also based on the new legislation that got passed. Sorry, wanted to throw that in.
No, thank you. So, uh, Councilmember Hurd, you were recognized first because you had your hand up earlier and then I'm, you'll come, you're next. And then you're next and then Vice Chair and, okay, we got everybody. We got the right list.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
My question is, did we, uh, consider the population of, of the children that's in the community when we decided upon this? Because I know that I lived, uh, right there at the corner of Bena Vista Pike and, um, Mormon Zone for thirteen years. And I know that it was an older community, um, when, when I was there. And, um, I know that Ewan Lane has become, uh, a younger, uh, community that has families and kids that are walking. So I'm just wondering if that was considered in the prioritization?
Yes, ma'am, it was. Uh, the, this latest prioritization was actually done two years ago. So when we went back and updated the walk-by plan, they, we refreshed everything, did a new prioritization list so that all that was taken into consideration. So it did look at the demographics of the area. It looked at the school zones, the parks. It took all of that into consideration as part of the prioritization. It also took the equity, uh, the, um, social values in place as well to make sure that we're, um, including those folks as well as maybe some areas that we weren't targeting in the past as well as much, that we were including them as well through this, uh, initiative and through the prioritizing.
Yeah, I'm just looking at the fact that Robert Lillard is closed. And I know that, um, Kip is still open on, uh, Knight Road and then you have, um, Maplewood and some of the other neighborhood schools in that area. And it just seems to me, I, I know I, I haven't lived there, but I still do attend church in some of the, you know, and I just know that it is an older population in that community.
Okay. Well, I'll have staff take another look at it. Thank you.
Councilmember Benedict, you're recognized.
Thank you, Chair. Um, so a few questions, following up on the Safe Routes to School deployments, um, the fifteen school locations, are those all elementary schools?
So I will tell you right now, um, Councilmember, we haven't identified all of them. Um, we were actually going to be, uh, looking at, again, the high injury network, also working with the school program, with the school system, excuse me, with MNPS. Um, as far as where they felt there were some needs and, uh, look at it addressing that. Our first was the most vulnerable areas where children were using and walking. I can think of one that we actually just recently did a bike-to-school program with that we really do need to think about crosswalks and how to put that in and enhance the school zone because I see people passing through it. But I also like, I, I drive, when I drive to work every day, I watch a crossguard, crossing guard stand out in the middle of the road in between cones versus having the appropriate markings that even safeguard that individual. And so we just recognized that there is a true need that we need to start building out the enhancement zones for school zones markings on the ground for our school system as a whole, not just all, but it would be targeting the most vulnerable in the beginning.
Thank you. And I, and I think, when I think about the most vulnerable, I think about people, kids who, people who don't know how to cross the street. So even though our high school, uh, high schools have the largest number of students, our elementary schools are the children who I believe are most vulnerable.
Right.
And so I would hope that we're focused on the elementary schools, um, more so than, um, the others. That would be my request if this request is fulfilled. Um, the other thing is on the, um, Vision Zero, and I know it, we just came out with this. I know that it's pretty up to date. I was very surprised to see Gallatin Pike not on the list. We just have had two fatalities in the past eight months at a location where it's a state route. Um, so I'm surprised it's not on there. My question would be, when was VZ last updated and, um, and, and, uh, I mean, Gallatin's, you know, I, I know that Dickerson is really, and is one of the most dangerous, if not the most dangerous in the city. Um, and it runs parallel to Gallatin. So, but people are moving off of Dickerson to come onto Gallatin. And I mean, we also had a near fatality with a, um, a woman, uh, and her children who were hit head-on while a car was passing traffic in the center lane. So, um, I know we see that on many of the other pikes, but we're seeing it much more often on Gallatin. So my question would be, when was that last updated? And can we be looking at, at updating that before this would be allocated so that we can make sure that we are hitting all of the right ones?
So the Vision Zero was actually adopted by council through a resolution last September. So it's pretty brand new. It's a five-year implementation plan. What you're seeing here is the second year of the implementation plan. There are some items for Gallatin on the first year, which we're currently doing now. So this would be part of our capital spending plan for year two implementation. So it is a five-year plan. We work through in the beginning through the half of, through the third year is when you start updating it for the next five years. So we would love to tackle all of the issues we have, but we would need a lot more in spending in order to get that done. So we are just taking the dollars that we're having following the implementation plan and trying to knock as much out as possible. So, but we, we do have some projects for Gallatin on this year, on year one that we're currently working on, including where we had one of the most recent incidents that occurred.
All right. That's what I have. Thank you, Chair.
Crashes, I want to say, excuse me.
Okay, so crashes, and so just to, yeah, just to recap, for the viewing public, so Vision Zero, data points are crashes, pedestrian injuries and deaths, WeGo stops and ridership. Is there anything else?
So when we are looking at the data that drives how we are determining what to target, we are looking at first the crashes that occur that lead to death are to, uh, serious injuries. And it could be car-related, it could be pedestrian-related, it could be bicycle-related, motorcycle. And we look at that. We then do also prioritize the most vulnerable community, which are your pedestrian and your bicyclists and your motorcyclists. Um, and so part of Vision Zero is looking at it through engineering, not just engineering design, but education. So when we talk about getting to the elementary kids, we're actually working with the schools right now where we're going to be implementing a program where we're going out to the third graders to talk about the appropriate way to cross a, a street and pressing the light and how to ride a bike, because that's the best age to be getting the kids. So we actually have that as part of our Safe Route program and that's actually built into this year and we've already started working with the public school system on that education piece that will begin in the fall. Um, so that's a really exciting, um, part of it. So you have an education component, you have the engineering, you also have the encouragement, which is where we do our open streets kind of initiatives, where we encourage people to understand how to use the street and that the street can be for more than just a car. Um, and then we, we do look at also the enforcement side of it and we always evaluate. When we're looking at the engineering side of it, it is led by crashes first. Then we look at the walkability. So what caused the crash is, is, is what comes out of it. The three leading causes of our crashes that are occurring on our roadways today um, is, um, speed, people driving way too fast. So when we look at engineering, we, we look at ways to slow people down so they follow the speed limit. That's the number one cause. The second cause of crashes that are occurring on our roadway are due to people being under the influence. So whether it's alcohol or drugs, which I will tell you is equal, um, is, uh, the second reason why we're seeing these crashes occurring that are leading to fatalities and to serious injuries. And then the last one I have to share with y'all is, um, that's leading to that is, um, distracted. So way too many people are on their phones, are eating, are putting makeup on, are doing something along that line. So that's part of our education component that we'll be coming out and marketing here pretty soon about put it all down, focus on your driving. One percent, one second off the road could be someone else's life or your own. And so we're going to be really hitting the market with that pretty clearly. I just really quick, while I do have a chance and, and I'm hoping the public's listening, is that we are also finding this year's data is reporting to that, that the, we are actually leading in, in exceeding in vehicular accidents, crashes, excuse me, that lead to death and, and, um, seriously, um, injuries. And we are finding that the reason why we're having so many, and a lot of them are single occupancy, the, uh, deaths that are occurring and is, the reason is, is because people are not wearing their safety belt. So we will be doing a big campaign with the sheriff's office, with the, uh, state of Tennessee about click it or ticket. Um, because we have lost a lot of lives this year in cars and cars by themselves, not involving anything else other than a car and that person not being in their seatbelt and being ejected and being killed. So, uh, you know, that's what we do. We dig into the data and we do look at WeGo. We make it sure that if a WeGo stop, we look at the walkability around it. That plays a very important role. So a lot of these improvements are tied to walkability as well, making sure that we're connecting the bus stop into the community so that folks aren't in a street, they're actually on a sidewalk in a safe area.
Thank you. And I think most, I think you may know, but, and I, I, again, I, I'm a big advocate for this. I was hit by a car and almost lost my foot um, when I was thirteen years old, riding my bike and, and, um, uh, on a country road. And, um, it's crucial to me that we make sure that never happens to any thirteen-year-old or anybody younger or anybody older.
I agree.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Benedict. So this is the list so far that I have. If anybody, if I've missed anybody, please let me know so I can get you on the list. I got Councilmembers Cash, Swora, Gamble, Rutherford and Toomes. And if you have any questions, that's the list right now. So Councilmember Cash, you are recognized.
Thanks. I appreciate all the detail on this. I want to ask about the, the list of traffic calming projects, um, which I, I like. I'm glad that we're getting more and the ones, um, that relate to my district, I think are in heavily pedestrian areas. There are three schools within a half mile of both of those streets. Um, not to mention a huge university that's pretty pedestrian. Um, I'm assuming that these things, since we are just now going down the list, are not. I'm assuming that these things, since we are just now going down the list, are not put on the CIB. Is that correct?
So traffic calming is in our CIB. And when we listed in CIB, we asked for a flat amount of $4 million to build out. And as you remember, our current program is we do 25 in the spring and 25 in the winter. This is allowing us, instead of doing 50 to 55, because sometimes we're able to stretch the dollars a little bit further. So for example, the last round, we actually chose 27 traffic calming programs. This is adding an additional 60. So instead of us doing 4 million, doing 50 or 55, we're going to be doing 110.
So the CIB calls for traffic calming infrastructure, but it doesn't necessarily list every street or section of streets?
Because we do, twice a year, we put out for applications to be submitted. We prioritize based on the applications submitted and the data collected. And based on that prioritization, that's how we select the next top ones and those are the ones that we move forward with in the project. Instead of taking and saying, hey, we're going to take and put these next ones back out and do reprioritizing, these are the next ones that are currently on the list before we put out for the ask of the next set of applications. So we can bring that list down because we can't seem to ever get out of the 400 number. And this is going to allow us to get out of the 400 number.
Gotcha. How, like, how are we doing in terms of, like, from the choosing of the street or the 25 or 30 grants in a season to actually finishing the project? Like, are we, are we on track or are we behind? Because it feels, correct me if I'm wrong, but it feels like we're behind because I could, I think I can go three cycles back and say we're not quite done with.
So, you know, we had this conversation last fall with the council and we actually, there was legislation that was changed, that was provided. One of the things that was actually provided was the ability for us to lead the balloting. Because before that was on the, actually on the neighborhoods. And what we were finding is the neighborhoods were never able to get the ballots completed. So this past round, in this last round of applications, we have 93% of the ballots already done and signed and we're out there implementing. So by the end of this year, we anticipate, God, I wish I had the numbers because we presented them in another presentation. But we will be around, last year we did 19, this year we're going to be around 60. So we are catching up.
Okay.
Pretty significantly.
I feel like the balloting is part of it, but it's not just the balloting. It's the public meetings and the time in between the, like, initial public meeting where, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong here, but where, you know, like 95% of the time, it's like predetermined, kind of predetermined that speed cushions are the way to go.
So we have backed off of that. We start with a design, we do come in with a design based on the, we come in, not with the design, excuse me, we come in with the data. So we do go out and do analysis and collect. So typically when we start selection, we've already done the data analysis. We put together a presentation of that analysis and we go, once we make the selection, we hit the ground running with setting up the meetings. And we hold during that time about three meetings a week to get through all, have 25 to whatever. So it does take us a little bit of time to get through it. It takes us about six weeks to get through all of the neighborhoods.
Right.
And have the conversation. We take with them the data and what we share with the data. And based on the data, we provide them with what we feel in the toolbox is the best recommendation. The community tells us, though, what they want. From that, we go back and we do the design. It typically takes us about three weeks and then we start flipping and turning it around. So you can imagine right now, I'm now at about a 12-week timeframe. And then, then once we do that, there's a ballot process. The ballot process now we do in less than 30 days. So now I'm on a four-month timeline. And then once we get that in and we get the 70, the approval done, which is 65% of the community says yes, go, then we are actually have a lot of the equipment. We have pre-bought in a sitting and we start implementing. So we have shortened it down where it was typically an eight to 12, down to where we're doing it in about five to six months.
Okay. Okay. I got one. I know that, like, we had the initial meeting six months ago and we're just about to have the second meeting. So we haven't even gotten to the balloting yet. So it's not, I guess.
I'm wondering why that's, I'd be happy to look at why we've been delayed on that one because we shouldn't have been.
Okay, okay. I guess, I guess part of my question is, like, I like this list and like our priority of traffic calming projects. I guess, one, I question if we, if we pass this as part of the budget, will we, will these be in place, assuming that the 65% of the community in that area wants it, will these be in place by this time next year?
They should be.
Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Cash. Someone made me aware and I just wanted to bring it up everybody. Officer Donovan Kobel, 33, he was shot in the side this afternoon while working on an armed robbery and a man shot him and he's in critical but stable condition right now. So if y'all just keep him in your thoughts, so, him and his family, so. Next on our list is Councilmembers Swora.
Thank you Chair. I will keep praying for Officer Donovan. I hope he gets out of it safe and well. So a number of questions. I'm not a district person, so some of this may not make any sense to you, what I'm saying, but I know you're going to help me out. So on the traffic calming, I know that we have it throughout the different districts. And I know that it's based on your priority that you've done as well. But would this be done in conjunction with the district CM? So let's say that I'm thinking what you're picking 17 is not good enough, can I swap it out? Or this is the one that we are recommending and this is the one we're doing?
So the applications are submitted by the actual neighbor, our neighborhood HOA, and brought forward. They're submitting the applications. When we receive them, we actually do analysis to determine, which is part of the prioritization. Then based on that prioritization, we take the top 25, sometimes even more, depending on what the ask is. Because sometimes we have to look at expanding something a little bit. Sometimes it's overshooting the ground, overshot that we need to bring it back. We could do somewhere around 25 to 27 and it gets prioritized and we take that top number and we move it forward. So this is the top numbers sitting on the list already prioritized. So we would not recommend swapping it out because then you're jumping one over the other. And this is more of a priority than the prior one based on the data analysis that was done.
Thank you. I'm glad that, I mean, we're investing back in the neighborhood and we're putting the money back. My question is, if we did not have the money in the surplus fund, if we did not have this, when would this have been funded? What was the timeline and how would they be funded?
It would probably get funded in next year's CSP.
So it would be in next year's CSP?
Correct. Because this year's CSP, we've already did receive the funding and we've started and we're actually getting ready to put out for next, for this winter. We're putting out the end of, in July, we put out for next winter selection. And that's what we'll start spending on the current CSP dollars that we have, which we currently only have 4 million. So this is allowing us to double up the number that we currently do.
And it allows us to do it in FY '24 instead of FY '25?
Yes ma'am.
Okay. Then the other question that I have, and the reason why I'm asking is because this is very critical and I'm very supportive of it, but I also don't want the administration to take the opportunity for us to use it for some other things if they're planning to do it anyway and then they are, you see what I'm saying? I don't know if what I'm saying makes sense. So they'll use this and then save the money that was supposed to be used before and then we don't get to reallocate this. So that's why I'm trying to make sure that I understand the process very well before we can say yes, no, whatever we're doing. The other question that I have for you, I love the idea about the school project that you're doing, the sign on the floor. It's amazing. So on some of this, on the Vision Zero project, I saw something that says TDOT here and there. Did we consider, this is outside of state and federal funding? Is this just a portion of it? Or is there opportunity to get other funding to be able to do part of this, especially where we're looking at state routes?
So there is some opportunities. So for example, we applied for Safe Streets For All grant for Nolansville. And so if we're successful with that grant, that would give us an opportunity to reappropriate some of those dollars to move over and do some additional projects that we would want to be able to advance and maybe take some year three projects and advance them forward. So when we do have federal opportunities or state opportunities, we do do it. But really, most of this improvements on design are going to fall on us. And we've just been working, that TDOT will allow us to make these improvements in our communities so that it's safer for those communities that are out there. So our most vulnerable, what our high injury network is showing us, that most of the crashes that are occurring and leading to deaths or serious injuries are in our most vulnerable communities. So we don't want to wait for TDOT to find the money because we'll be waiting forever. We want to go in and make the corrections. We want to go in and change the designs. We want to go and add the pedestrian crosswalks. We want to give the priorities to the most vulnerable users. We want to create those safe passages. TDOT's on board and is allowing us to make improvements to their networks and we work in partnership, but this is not necessarily their priority. They're super happy we're doing it, but it's very much a priority for us through our Vision Zero effort.
And the last question is, of the ones that you're expecting some grants of money for, is it where they are, is it a long time? Do you know if you have any coming in and do you know how much that is? You're not waiting for them, but I'm trying to see, how much do we have in the pipeline?
So we actually have applied for $20 million through Safe Streets For All, which would be for Nolansville. And really what that would do is would give us about, about seven mil, no, not that much, excuse me, about 4 million that was planned for Nolansville that we would be able to reappropriate. But in that Safe Streets For All grant that we applied for, for Nolansville, allowed us to do so much more than what we ever had planned. So that's allowing us to really look at doing a transformational project on Nolansville, which we didn't have planned in the five-year implementation program. So that's a, that's a huge project that we're looking at. It's given us more, but it would give us an opportunity to take some dollars and move them around so that we could advance year three projects into year two.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Councilmembers Swora. Vice Chair Gamble, you're recognized.
Thank you Chair. And thank you, Ms. Alikon, for the presentation and for the foresight to have all of this information ready so that if we have this surplus that we have, to be able to recommend that we use it in this way. And I think this is a fantastic way.
You only have to ask me once.
This is a fantastic way to use this surplus because we are improving quality of life with these issues. And that's, and that's very important. So you've kind of answered the question that I had already about the traffic calming and the fact that this will make it so that we can do more in the 24 budget than proposed. And I think that's great because traffic calming is something that the communities really want and need. I have another question though, and I'm not sure if this is for you or Director Flannery, but the 10 million additional reserve for MNPS, can that be used for the request that we have for arts, putting art teachers in schools? It would be, I guess, operational. It would be somewhat.
All sorts of.
But it does relate to schools. Would be able to use it in that way?
If you're talking about funding teachers?
Well, I guess.
Teach art?
It says, art is in residency. So would that be ongoing? It would be a one-year thing, I guess, unless they, unless schools put it in their budget, which we hope that they would do. I mean, we've had that in the past where we funded, the council decided to fund our community centers, opening our community centers one year. And now, since then, it's been continually added to the budget. So we would hope something like that would happen. But would we even be able, according to the charter, according to the fund balance policy that we just stated, would we be able to use that for that purpose?
The fund balance policy that was unanimously approved says that the allowable use would be one-time capital expenses. And I don't know where the capital would be on that program.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. So at this point, moving any money out of that list that you gave us for the USD, I think it was, it's recommended now to go to capital projects with MNPS. So if we were to move that money in any way, it would have to go to capital projects for MNPS?
Capital for GSD, USD, MNPS, the policy for all three of those is capital, retirement of debt, which, haven't hurt anybody, want to do that, but I'm down for that. Or just leave it and let it continue to grow.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
And as long as Director Alikon keeps giving us items like this that are really needed, I don't think anyone's going to be willing to do your suggestion. I'm sorry.
I didn't even write it down.
Don't touch the money, Kelly.
Councilmember Rutherford, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My question relates to traffic calming. First off, I'm delighted to see traffic calming coming to District 31. We've felt a little left out over the years. I can tell you that. But, and I know I'm not the only one, yes. But when it comes to prioritization, that's really the, I guess, the heart of my question in how that is determined. When I look at the list and see the one that is on here, I know that there are other applications that have applied, where the neighborhood or streets have applied over and over again. So it's been a part of the system or in the system, if you will, for quite some time, I believe longer than this one. Also, I could look at need, I could look at size as well. I believe this one is relatively smaller compared to some of the others. I know that Lennox Village is a larger project. It's the largest neighborhood in my district. And Sunnywood Drive on, and Lennox is quite long. And I know there would be significant cost related to traffic calming for Lennox. So how much does that play a factor in terms of determining, you know, who gets what, which projects, you know, go forward and which ones don't? Because I know the folks at Lennox, the HOA, they're screaming about this. They're really, really frustrated. And they're not the only ones. There's a couple of others as well. But they've probably been in pursuit longer than most and are quite significant in terms of size. So can you address that?
Yes, sir. So when we are actually looking at the analysis, they are doing speed to check what this speed, that 87, 85 percentile of speed is. So what, how much over the posted speed limit the vehicles actually are running at. They also look at the volume of cars based on the roadway width and determine that. They look at crashes that are in that, that have occurred in that area. They look at, and whether there are serious crashes or fatality crashes, what are the cause of the crashes? They look at all of that. And that goes into a data set that actually gives the points and then it's prioritized out of that. It is not prioritized based on how long your application has been in. It's really based on the data that's causing the traffic to be a quality of life issue of speeding, which is a big quality of life issue. We can certainly, I wrote down Lennox, I certainly can go back and take a look at that if that's one you want us to take a look at and consider.
I would, yes. I would love for you to take a closer look at that one. And I think it's also worth noting that you might want to make note of, and I'm not sure if this weighs in in terms of factor, factoring as to whether or not it's a determining factor, I should say, is that Sunnywood is the access point to the Mill Creek Greenway. And so Sunnywood ends up carrying a lot more traffic for people accessing the greenway than it would if the greenway was not there.
And they do consider that, I want you to know. I left out, so if there's a parks or a school that's in the area, that is part of the evaluation process as well. And so they may still not have ticked enough points and that's why this one rose to the top.
Okay.
But I wrote down Lennox and I'll check on that.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, Councilmember Rutherford. I appreciate you being here today because you have a further drive than I do and I appreciate when people drive a long way to come to these meetings.
I do have a further drive, but I also got here in time as well.
That traffic calming he has, I don't think he needs. Councilmember Toomes, you're recognized.
Thank you Chair. A couple of things. One, I wanted to speak to the Buena Vista Pike as a current resident of that neighborhood. I live off of Mormons Arm Roads on very near Rowan Drive in Buena Vista Pike. And that corridor came up during the discussion for the Haynes Manor traffic calming project. So there's been a lot of discussion with NDOT staff already, as well as one-on-one discussions with myself about the need for sidewalks along that corridor. Because we do have families. We have a lot of pedestrian traffic and there's a lot of speeding on that Pike. So add to it, but don't take that away. Don't take that way. Because there is a need for sidewalks on UN Drive. There may be some space issues because of the size of UN Drive, but there's definitely a lot, a ton of traffic on UN Drive, a lot of speeding, and also a lot of new residents and families.
I will take more money to get more done. I have no problem with that.
So advocating for UN Drive because that's in my district as well, but also Buena Vista Pike needs the sidewalk. I had a question about Lane Drive on the traffic calming because Lane Drive is part of the Haynes Manor project that's ongoing. So I was wondering how it was on the list. Was it another part of Lane Drive or?
It would be. So there is, like always, a beginning and ending and we sometimes can't hit the whole street. whole street. So, this may be the other part of it, so we have a consistent flow-through.
Okay.
And it also rose to the top. Again, we didn't go and cherry pick. We took the next set, list that, we took the next traffic calming applications that were already prioritized based on the last round, because we didn't want to shuffle it back up and reprioritize. If we're, have this opportunity to get this extra 4 million, we feel like we need to just pick off of this and move forward very aggressively.
Okay. And do you have, and you don't have to give it now, but do specifics on which schools would get the, or is it all schools would get the striping?
Well, we can do about 15, I think it's 15 schools that we had identified. And if we can get a better price, or y'all do approve the budget where I'm able to bring striping in-house, I will be able to get more done.
Okay.
Yes, I did a pun for me, a push for me. We, but this is based on outsourcing it and what it would cost. I can do it cheaper, so if y'all give it to me, I can get more done. And then, I would be able, looking at, then, at just the labor and the materials, because we can definitely go number one.
What does that, what do you mean, give it to you? What does that look like?
So, we asked in our budget, one of our budget modifications for this round was actually the, we actually asked for it last round, and y'all had approved it. And then, it got pulled back at the last minute because of the shortfall in the school budget. So, I have the positions, but I didn't have the funding to move it forward. I had the money for, I had money for equipment, but I then got it pulled back, so I couldn't move it forward. So, we would, we put this back in again, because we are struggling on striping a little bit. And yes, I know I'm doing a little bit of my budget pitch, I'm sorry about that. But I'm going to take advantage of the opportunity. We put it back in, because right now, we're about four months behind using contractors. So, when we put an ask in for striping on the roadway, it takes about four months for it to work through the pipeline to get to it, because that's how backed up they are. There's not that many ones. So, we wanted to bring it in-house, have our own striping machine, have our own folks, and have our own materials, so we could go get it done more efficiently, quicker, faster, and for a lot less. And so, this price of being able to get 15 schools done is what priced out. I think we would actually significantly increase that if our striping is improved and we're able to bring this in-house, we would be able to really move it forward.
Okay.
I don't remember the budget modification. Do you remember the budget modification, Kristen, for the striping team? I will. I will send it to you. Thank you. You need to send it over.
That's all I have, Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Toomes. Thank you, Director. Councilmember Stiles, you are recognized.
Thank you very much, Chair. I just wanted to take a moment to say thank you, because every single one of the projects that have been a huge issue in my district is actually on this list, and I'm appreciative. And Pebble Creek was installed today, so I've been getting blown up all day long.
Oh, I wish you had said that when Councilmember Cash was here.
So, yes, thank you very much. The changes you are making are working. I want people, anyone watching, listening, to know, you've done a really great job since you've been Director at revamping and redirecting this ship, because it was going in a really bad direction.
Thank you.
So, congratulations.
Yeah, we have a great team.
Thank you.
They, they're very passionate about what they do. I'm very proud of them. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Director Flannery, I don't really have any questions, because we've kind of been going through this, just, you know, and with, in meetings. We've had meetings, and I'm sure we'll have another meeting or two before we even get to the final, my budget and before it gets voted on. What I would like to do, this was just distributed between this group today, I would like to be able to distribute this to the entire council. The only problem is, I know that you will probably get, because all I can do is say, if you have a question about a project, call NDOT, and I don't want you just to get blown up, but you might get blown up, is what I'm...
I'm okay with that.
Okay.
I'm really okay with that. And actually, actually, y'all have this presentation. It's on, Rose has it, so you just ask her to ship it out to everyone. I just, real quick, want to highlight, this is a map that we put together that shows where the projects are happening throughout the whole district. So, we kind of wanted to also give you a visual to kind of be able to identify. And that's part of this presentation as well.
Great. So, I'm sure I'll get some blowback come Monday or Tuesday when I walk in the door about Kevin, that's not what I want, or Kevin, you know, on the side, and that's...
They can give me a holler, sir, we'll dig into it.
Okay. So, that sounds, that sounds great. Does anybody else here have any questions for either Director Flannery or Director Alikon? Speak now or forever hold your peace. Going once, going twice. Director Flannery knows she's going to be back, whether she likes it or not, so...
I'll come back and talk about my budget anytime.
No, I have a few more meetings with her, I'm sure, before June 14. Thank you so much. So, for everybody on budget and finance, and everybody that's here today, so, we don't meet again until next Thursday. What I would like to do next Thursday is start working through the budget wish list. So, next Thursday, when we sit down, I mean, obviously, there's a lot of items on here that are exactly the same. And so, hopefully, we can kind of get those all into buckets and start working through those and kind of figure out where we're going to get the money. Because as y'all are all aware, if we, if we're asking for some money, we've got to take it from somebody. And I'm not, I like to make everybody happy, and that's not going to happen. So, but next Thursday's when we're going to do that. And then, if we have any issues with Director Alikon's list, I'm going to start trying to work through some of those. I've already had some council members at the last meeting say they might not want a project in their district, they might want the money going to some other capital thing that they know. And so, those are issues that we have to look at and see whether the CIB allows it legally, whether we can do it, whether or not Director Flannery says we can do it. And then, if we can, then we can all try to kumbaya on that. So, that's kind of where we are on this right now. So, I've got about two weeks to try to get all this together, and hopefully, all y'all helping me, we can all make this a budget and finance budget, not just a Kevin budget. I don't want it to be that. So, really, I really, really, I really want this to be, I don't, I don't, this is not my budget, this is budget and finances budget. So, when we present it to the council, I want everybody to, to understand where we're coming from, and everybody say, yes, this is what we all recommended. I don't want it to just be, I mean, there's going to be some items that get left out. We know, that's just the way it is every time. And I apologize now for anybody who gets left out of the, you know, off the list. It's just one of those things, we're going to try to work through it. Director, you look like you were either wanting to eat or talk to me. Which one? Yes, you, you look very... Mike Jameson, how's your arm?[1673.54]